That'll work fine. I think we'll just go through them. Yeah, that'll work fine. Okay, the first thing I was gonna lead with here is that I got a call from Jose Alanis from Congressman Tipton's office. And Congressman Tipton plans to be here on Friday. And they're hoping to do a tour of Sage Hen and House Creek with us. So they're planning to be here one, one thirty. We haven't got all the details worked out on this yet, so I'm still coordinating with him on that. We'll get the commissioners the final details on that as we can. Depending on the amount of time, it's kind of a long ways to go from Sage Hen to House Creek. So they may opt to just to visit one. But I think if we go to the Sage Hen side, we can talk readily about the House Creek side as well. I've thought about that, John, and that would be a better way to do it in some ways, yeah. I could sure look into that.
You're fine. We had a boat?
Yeah. Yeah, you could just jet back and forth across the.
The only thing that's nice about the House Creek is it, you know, we've been talking about this is the road. And I would love for him to see the deterioration of the House Creek road.
There's definitely some merit to that, because that road is, yeah, it's got some serious issues all the way down.
It's got weeds growing up in it.
Yeah, absolutely. Cracks, that wide, you know, yeah.
Anyway.
Okay, so I'll let the commissioners know as this kind of comes online and then we'll have to make sure that, I'll let Jose know that we're gonna have to notice this. So we'll try to make sure we get everything squared away on that. Kind of short, short.
That's the.
Program, that's this Friday.
This Friday.
So I'm gonna be out of town Friday.
Okay.
I'll be here, that's twenty seventh, right?
Yes.
Will you be here with the commissioner?
Yeah, I'll be here.
I'll be here as well.
I'll be here the next day, but I'll be here that.
All right. Well, I'll just let you know as things unfold on this, how things are looking.
And we'll put it on the website when we.
Yes, we should notice it on the website.
So it'll be on the county website on our meeting, what time and where? They're just gonna, what time we're gonna meet?
Right, yeah. Uh, let's see, let's go on to the draft partnership management agreement between the county and the Forest Service for the Ferris and Day Use Campsites. And that's what we have right here. And this is what the Forest Service sent me, this is what they, they're proposing. And they're just asking us to take a look at it. I think this is probably more for Duarte County currently. But as we may choose to become more and more engaged in it, then this is something that we've got. I think it's pretty, mostly pretty reasonable stuff. The one thing that we've been looking into a little bit more is where they're doing the water quality sampling. And, you know, the BLM is doing it at the Bradfield Bridge site. And so Doug kind of had the idea of maybe we'll talk to the BLM and see if we can put all three together.
All together and do them.
Because the hard part is running that water sample over to Durango, it has to be there within twenty-four hours. It's like fifty bucks or something to have a water sample done. They test for chloroform, fecal chloroform, once a month. And then they also test for nitrates and nitrites. I think that may be just a once a year test on that one. Anyways, pretty minimal cost associated with that. But I think we can probably work together with the BLM, figure out how we can put all three of them together and get them done.
Are they, does it say who's gonna pay for that?
Yeah, no, not at this point.
It'll be on the counties, because I don't think, I think the Forest Service wants to eliminate those if we don't make sure they stay, so.
Right, yeah.
It's not very far to the heart.
That's right, it ain't. That's right.
You know, that's right.
Okay, I think we'll go on now to the E-PAC update on Regulation Seven rulemaking. And that will be, there will be two of them associated with that, and there'll be two draft letters. This is Mesa County, this is good enough, wasn't it? So last year, we went in with Mesa County on a letter that was in opposition to the BLM flaring rules. And so that's coming back up again. There is a comment that blew the due date, it's on the sixth, next Monday. So basically Mesa County is asking us if we want to want to join in again on that this year. So they've already sent their letter. So basically what their suggestion is if we feel feel like it, draft a letter and send it off. And I'd be happy to do that. Commissioners would like me to do so, and I'll have it ready for Monday.
You said November sixth?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, November.
So that's two weeks away?
Two weeks away, yes.
Because we might not be meeting next week.
Oh, okay.
The fifth Monday.
Okay, that'd be fine, that still works with the deadline.
Why don't we just make a decision now?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you just want to direct me to write the letter, I'll do that and I can send it. Can I share?
I'm in support of Mesa County's position, I'm in support of it, yeah.
Do you need their signatures on it?
I don't think we really need to, we can just put it on behalf of the county commissioners. For this one, it should suffice, it's comments, so it gets us into the record.
Some commissioners.
I agree.
Okay, I'll just take care of that then. Okay, then, let's see, what else have we got?
Is this the same letter, or?
Yeah, yes, that's, that was the letter we sent last year, I just.
Well, let's look at the logos. I tell you why.
Yeah, we're in there.
Yeah, but.
Okay.
Well, I see, who's this? That one's hard to read.
Who is it? I think that's Rio Blanco, but I'm not sure. I can't quite tell, yeah. There's not a very effective word. Okay, moving down to another point here. So we've discussed with the BLM about having a public meeting down at Sand Canyon. On the, on November sixth, we don't have an afternoon planning session meeting. So the thought is maybe we host a meeting down there, right onsite at Sand Canyon on November sixth. If the commissioners are agreeable to that. I think, you know, if we're hearing anything from the public down there, they probably want to talk to the commissioners anyway. So we could, we could just reconvene the meeting down there if that's suitable for admission.
Sure, anything to get that.
How do you feel about that commission letter?
Fine with me, okay.
What about you, Miss?
I have a question about that. Will this be something that I need to attend, because November seventh is my election.
November, November sixth? Oh, we don't want to burden her.
No, we don't, is this something that we?
Will we use a recorder?
Yeah.
Or I can send somebody else?
I think we can cover it, let's do both.
Yeah, let's do both.
We're running out of good weather, is why I'm trying to push this on. So, okay, we'll try to do that. We've, I've been talking with Ernie about getting some of the surveys for that area down there. We feel pretty confident about it, but we certainly don't want to run into any more snags. So Rachel is actually drawing up the property boundary adjacent to it, because our design flows over just a little bit. And that way we'll have something we can visit with, with that property owner, too.
Get that easement right away all squared away and understood.
Yeah, as best we can, you know, we may miss something yet, but having at least Ernie review it, give us another set of eyes, so. Do the best we can. Then also wanted to let the commissioners know that we're planning to have a meeting on Sage Hen, that'll be November fifteenth. So you'll get another reminder on this. But November fifteenth, from six to nine. And we'll just be talking about the plans that we've got in place so far. To kind of bounce that off the public, see if it seems to be working, and see if we're on the right track with everything, so.
Oh, that's good. Could you send us a calendar request?
Yes, I can sure do that.
Send it to Melissa, and she will, she's really good at that.
She's on it.
Fill up their calendars.
She's on it, yeah.
When we see it, we know it's mandatory when we see her name.
And then, you know, we wanted to give the commissioners a little bit of an update on what we found out from the BLM on the situation with SHPO. And so Connie did turn in their plan and certainly got it back from SHPO promptly. Completely full of red lines all over again. And so I think that they're at an impasse. Connie has sent a letter to her state director, and they're basically asking for a review of the protocol and BLM policy and the agreement between SHPO and BLM. They feel like they've done everything that they could possibly do to make SHPO happy. And the things that SHPO is requesting is now outside of the bounds of what the policy, as well as the law states. So the BLM will be making a case on that. I've sent the commissioners this letter, so you just included that yourselves. And I asked them, are we at a point where the county needs to give you a hand on this? And basically the response is, we're right at the cusp of it. Unless the state office tells SHPO to back off, then we're probably gonna have to help weigh in on that, so.
I tell you, I'm proud of Connie, that letter was, I don't know, have you had the opportunity to read it?
She's right on the money, she's absolutely right.
And, I don't know. I'm just willing to file a lawsuit against SHPO, we had to, because she, I mean, what she has said in there, if SHPO gets away with following a law that is not even a law anymore since two thousand two. Then they will stop all.
Anything.
Anything in this county. And if we don't stand up to that, then we're in trouble.
That's just unthoughtful.
I tell you what, SHPO's gonna, have you read it?
Yeah.
They're gonna have a hard time defending that.
So I guess we're, you know, essentially in a holding pattern, waiting for Connie to give us the word on whether or not we want to step in or not. And I'll just kind of keep in touch with her on that.
They want them to monitor sites that are seventy-five feet away from the trail, from the bike trail. And there is no law that's, I mean, that's seventy-five feet away, it's crazy.
Why do you monitor that when it's that far out of your realm of activity?
And even on some of the ineligible sites and everything, I mean, it's.
Yeah, and they're ineligible sites, meaning that they're.
They're of no value.
Yes.
Yeah, they're of no value.
Well, gentlemen, I guess that kind of concludes my, my report for the week, so we'll kind of keep moving ahead. Anything else for me at this point?
No, thank you.
Okay, well, we'll keep working on trying to get everything set up with Congressman Tipton's office, and that's kind of the main.
Did you inform Ramco of the bid of work to them?
I did, yes, yeah. So the, where we're at right now with that is working with our consultant. The consultant feels like it's gonna take more time than he's got available to, to help get Bert Ramsey through it. So he's working with Atkinson-Nolan, the consultant, the engineering team that was on the concrete. And seeing if he can split the load up with them on that.
Why does he think it's gonna require so much more time?
Mainly it's because it's an inventory sort of a process, mainly to comply with the SHPO stuff. Yeah, so they have to go through and document each piece and make sure that it wasn't a piece that needed to be replaced. Some of those pieces they're gonna want to, they want you to try to patch every single piece you could possibly try to patch. Using like those Dutchman Splices and stuff like that, so. Yeah, it's quite a process for.
So will SHPO have somebody on, on site?
No, that's up to Bert to do. Yeah, so that's why it's gonna be a little more training for him to learn how to do, do the whole assessment and figure each piece out. So this is kind of, it's more than just construction. It's actually inventory for him, too.
So SHPO, it's interesting you bring that up, because you and I attended the BLM meeting with the BLM and SHPO. And they kept telling the BLM that they were out of, that they wanted certain things. And then they turned it around and the, the BLM said, we have this in this page. And then they would say, well, we want this, and the BLM would say, we have this in this page. They had three pages, and, and so SHPO still said, instead of just saying, so they had everything. And then SHPO still wasn't satisfied, and I've never seen nothing like it in my life. If you need something, why don't you just say, okay, here's a list of what we need? They wanted the BLM to guess.
What they want.
Well, how do you, how does that work?
Yeah, write something up and we'll give you feedback on it.
That's, that's what they said.
Yeah. So that's why we're a little bit worried about this, too. So, but we'll, you know, we've got money in the budget, we'll make sure that we've got it covered to, if, you know, if the primary consultant can't handle the whole load on his own, then we'll, we'll figure out how to, how to split that up. And try to get Bert through this, so.
Sorry, the consultant didn't say anything to you before we was doing the bids?
Yeah, well, I think he was probably pretty, pretty confident he was gonna get his man for it, so. Anyway, yeah, yes, a little more and more work on his end, I get that, I mean, I understand what he's saying. It's gonna take Bert some, some effort to work through this hall.
But he makes more money.
He does make more money? Yeah, the consultant does, he's just worried about his time constraints on it more than anything. But I think, you know, the other consultant firm was really good with us, and they seem to be interested in helping, so. You know, as long as we can get Bert trained up on it, I think that should be one of the things that we're focused on, is to try to make sure that he increases his capacity. You know, hopefully this will do that for him. It'll be something he's never tackled before, is for sure, so. He's gonna learn how to do Dutchman Splices, so.
Thank you, James.
I bet he can.
I think he can, too, yeah.
John Baxter, the attorney report. Yeah, I think the only thing I wanted to report on was this memo that I created in order to encourage employees in Monasim County to address their concerns. And so I'll read it to you real quick, and if you guys are okay with it, we can add stuff to it or take stuff out of it. Or otherwise, I can, I can just issue it to basically our non-elected departments. And then we can also put this procedure, a piece of it, into our employee handbook, whenever the next time is that we change or update our employee handbook. But it's just to one of the county non-elected departments, and it says this.
I'd put it on the screen, but my screen locked up. I can't get it.
Even have troubles today.
It's not working for me today.
So regular and forthright communication between employees and supervisors is encouraged in the best interest of Monasim County. Employees should bring to the attention of their supervisors any work-related problems as soon as they arise and discuss the concern and the objective of resolving the matter. Supervisors will not deter employees from addressing their concerns by using this procedure. Employees will not be discriminated against for using this procedure. And then I have the procedure, which is employees should first address the concern with their immediate supervisor. If the concern is not resolved, or the concern is with the immediate supervisor, then employees should address the concern with the next level of supervision, progressively up to the department head, then to the human resources in the Monasim County Administration, or pursuant to Monasim County's organizational chart. Ultimately, if the concern is still not addressed, or if the concern is with the administration, then employees should contact the Monasim County Board of Commissioners. So again, that's it. So it wouldn't apply to Ken's department, to the sheriff, to the DA, because they're the ball of the buck stops at Ken for her employees, they can't complain to you all. So this is for, you know, landfill maintenance, social services, health department, everybody else who is under the purview of the commissioners.
That sounds good, what do you commissioners think?
I think that should be implemented.
So we'll, we'll send that out today. I'll print it out and sign it or something.
Okay. And I think we've got a couple other housekeeping duties to do on the handbook, so in the next month or two.
So this will be added to it.
But this, the memo will go out, so.
The memo will go out immediately, so.
Policy, whether or not it's in the handbook.
Right.
Out of the handbook whenever it gets updated. I think that's it. I did talk some more with Ken Morgan's attorney last week. And, and actually, I think I'm gonna send an issue that he's complaining about to, to our auditor, to get her take on it. But it's just basically what, what, what his complaints are, what his beef is with, with the twenty-ten audit. I think that's why he wanted to continue this.
Oh, yeah.
Hearing those stuff for today. He doesn't think that we should be able to have this hearing, but really the only purpose of us having this hearing is to allow them to voice their concerns with evaluation. They're entitled to have this. And I think their argument is that if we don't give them this, then they're gonna be complaining about that at the Board of Assessment Appeals and Demur, and say, why didn't we get an opportunity to do this? They can't follow procedure, you shouldn't allow it. So I think we have to let them voice their concerns. They're not real optimistic that you all are gonna go with them and against the Supreme Court. But still, we need to, we need to give them the opportunity to.
I don't know, we have, we'll have an eight or nine-year window to sit and wait and rest on our laurels.
So, so for now, that, that hearing's continued, it's two weeks from now. So that's it.
All right, Kenny Administrator.
Ready for me? First of all, I do have letters for, we have Friday with the BOE hearings. Those are the letters that just state, each one of the taxpayers that asked for a hearing, what your decision about staying with the assessors.
Assessment.
Assessment on those. I think there was only one, there was the Barnhart that they found a problem with, and they actually reduced the assess value, and in that letter it says what that adjusted value is. So those are, those are there for to sign. And Leanne just handed me a couple of invoices from Ernie, looking at the County Road thirty.
Five point six.
How do you win a thousand dollar bill there, where would you like for me to pay that from?
What is it for?
For surveyants, the area out there.
Check it out, section line there.
But no, this, no, this one, this one is Hay Camp, this one.
Yeah, this one's Hay Camp, the one is up there.
This one is, this one is Rob's, for the Hay Camp survey area.
For the gravel pit or something.
So that, that one will go to Rob, so that one's, it's not so bad. It's a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty bucks for this. Right here, pretty good.
I was gonna say.
I was worried about the thousand dollars. But that, that one actually goes to Rob, because it has to do with the Hay Camp gravel pit, so Rob will pay that one.
This one's a spendy one, right?
No, that, that's the hundred and thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This one goes with this, let me have this one back, I know where that one is.
Where do you suggest we take the hundred and thirty dollars from?
I just didn't know what, probably any budget can handle it, where do you think it's most appropriate?
CSU extension office. That wasn't funny, I, apparently.
Well. I'll send it to the BLM. I'm surveying their property lines, getting the easement and all that, and how the.
You think they'll pay it?
I don't know, but find out. They brought all this stuff on us.
So, okay. I also have a flyer here that I'm gonna post. I'm just gonna put it up on the screen to share with everybody, but it's not going there. Farm Profitability Conference, probably post this on our website.
South Coast Agricultural Seminar.
So.
Oh, by, by High Desert Conservation, right?
November eighteenth, can you read what it?
Yeah, it says, Saturday, November eighteenth, from nine AM till three thirty at the Lewis-Ariola Community Center. Dan Burko, Dryland Pharma will be, from Montana, will be a keynote speaker. Talking about no-till, continuous cropping and diversification of crops. Dan Hobbs, Producer, Producer Cooperatives. Then there'll be a panel discussion about innovative practices. Sean Archibek will be talking about cattle and crop production. Western Share will do, Sarah will do cover crops. Dragonline drip irrigation, which we had the demonstration on, out here on one of our farmers. And organic field crop production. Brought to you by High Desert Conservation District. Cost will be ten dollars, lunch will be served. Our SVP by November sixteenth by calling Catherine at nine seven oh five two nine eight three six eight.
I'll just put that on the front page of our website. And I'll put it on the bulletin board downstairs, so anybody's interested in that one. Couple of updates. The parking lot for Annex One is scheduled the twenty-seventh of October. And this is a note that I wrote to Mike Shennard, and he had contacted everybody in that building so that they know what the schedule is for parking and moving and all that kind of stuff.
Get signs from Rob and get the.
I need to double check with.
He talked to Rob, and Rob said they were available, so they could put clothes, put their signings out there.
I tell you what, he has did such a good job over there, sprucing that place up.
Oh.
Those signs in that.
If you get the, with this new asphalt on there, that whole place will look brand new. I mean, it really.
And I think what we're gonna have to do, I'm going to be unpopular, but I'm also going to dictate where Moco.
Good for you.
Moco.
Designating that.
Designated parking spots are, so that if, as the facility's being used, not all the front parking's taken up by Moco, who's not there, you know.
Right, I think that's a good idea, Melissa.
We did have an elevator inspection that they missed. When they came and did all of these, they didn't do this one, this one's out of rotation with the others because of that work that we did on the elevator. So all, it goes through three different agencies and all that kind of stuff, trying to figure out where everything is at, to just keep it on top of them to make sure we get the right papers, so.
Where are other elevators?
Well, all of the stairlifts, we got the stairlift, yeah. There's only one elevator, but any, any moving facility, one is, we do have the one out at the fairgrounds that is not operating. So that one is not.
Not operable.
At this point, so Jerry from Cortez Electric was gonna look at it, see if there's anything that he thought he could do. So it may be something we have to look at for a major expense to get that repaired, replaced, I don't know. But all the other ones are working. The poll for the sandal, solar panels of the new courthouse was installed on Monday. We haven't heard yet from Yellow Jacket about the installation, but they were trying to get some of that dirt work done before the ground grows. So they're working on that, should be coming pretty quick. And that's all of that one. There was a, the Brownsville grant application coming through. I think it's through, what is it called over there, Dorado Knot, Miriam?
Oh, COG?
The COG.
Council of Government?
I don't know if it's the COG, or Region Nine. Region Nine wanted to know if we wanted to put the Justice Building on there for Brownsville removal. Asbestos removal. We're kind of at that. If we're trying to sell it, do we want to try to remove that? Depends on, it depends on who.
Decide that on, once we have a buyer or an interested party, don't you think?
Yeah, I think it's, but I don't, you know, putting all that stuff. If it were a building that we were gonna keep and knew that we needed to take all the stuff out or move the walls, I think that's something different. But I'll, I might just write back to them and say, you know.
Brand new here.
This building is potentially gonna be sold, so I don't know what that means. And then there was.
Is there like a short period of time for that? I mean, is, is there any other buildings that could be, that could be used on in Monasim County? I guess they have different entities.
I, I need to ask Region Nine, but I think it is buildings that are owned by Monasim County. So the only thing that I'm thinking, I don't know if it's the only. There are some pipes in the dungeon of this, down here. It's like a dungeon.
For the attorneys.
No, below the attorney.
Below the, oh my gosh, sir.
That goes way down into the dungeon that we don't really use, it's an area that we've cleaned up.
Anymore, they're from the old steam heating system that used to be.
But I don't know if they just need to be removed.
Removed, yeah. That might be worth an assessment to find out what should be done with those, if they just, if they're abandoned from the old steam, I'll bet they're from the old steam radiator.
And when we did the geothermal, they're not being used, but if they're just hanging there, I don't know if it's a potential hazard or not. Nobody goes down there. I've walked through there, but it, it's a dungeon. And Jim McLean forwarded, one of the people that responded to the RFP on the broadband project, wanted to know if we wanted, are you still interested in doing conference with the companies that responded to the RFP? FG Incorporated or Forsight, wanted to know if we wanted to meet with them.
I think there's, I've gotten some base camp emails, and I think they're, we're trying to get another meeting of that base camp in September, November, so maybe.
Connect four?
Yeah, connect four, yeah.
So I didn't know if there was any. Those were the catch-ups.
Probably respond and tell, Commissioner Hattel said that probably that'll be, that determination will be made after that meeting.
Okay. As I think, and I, I did put forth an idea to do a budget workshop next Monday, but you said you were gonna be gone.
I'm gonna be out of town next Monday.
So when would you like to schedule a budget workshop? I probably need, what my intention was to put all the stuff together, and then I know that certain departments, you know, this is where extra. that certain departments, you know, this is where extra was, or they asked for an increase or something, to try to put the whole thing together and say, this is how much out of balance we are, take those bits and pieces and put them on a big old thing that we can mark however we want to mark to try to balance that.
Commissioner, are you, are you gonna be gone that first week? Do we need to do it like the second week in November?
Yeah, I'll be back the third of November.
Could we be done on the sixth?
Well, I think that's what James was just saying, that they wanted to go to the San Canyon. We could do it another day that week.
Which, well, which was more priority as far as, are we gonna close the afternoon? I don't know how long you need, but how long's it gonna take us to go to San Canyon back? I mean, we could probably get the budget, too, right? Or is that too much?
It's up to you guys.
I ride my bike down there to San Canyon all the time, I don't need to go, I've already been there.
You can do the budget, listen.
Yeah. Melissa's guiding me, I'll take care of you guys.
Who was gonna be at the San Canyon meeting, the BLM?
BLM, yeah.
Are they just wanting to talk about the parking lot?
I'm not sure, or the lack thereof, I'm afraid, that's-
But didn't James also say progress?
Yeah, if, if we do, if we do a, a, a meeting where all the commissioners go down there.
So I, I can go either way.
Let's do, let's do the budget that afternoon, maybe we replan that in San Canyon.
Well, what, we could, we could kind of look and see in the next, this week, me getting that together, send it to you ahead of time, so it may make it an easier, a shorter meeting, reading through that. And I don't know what's on the agenda for the sixth, we may even be able to get the budget done in the morning.
Is the thirteenth too late?
I don't think so, either one.
Tell you what, the-
The sooner I get it to you-
The sooner, the better, as far as the week, 'cause there's gonna be some adjustments since the sixth.
Okay. And we can still, I mean, we've got two weeks, at least a week to know what we can schedule for the sixth, so if we can get it done.
Okay.
I'm gonna lock myself up this week. I might go to the dungeon.
Go to the dungeon.
I might go to the dungeon.
Nobody'll be able to find you, yeah.
So. He doesn't know what's going on with this weird thing. I told him, I said, the thing's locked up, it won't do anything. That's just, it's frozen.
Is that the end of your report, Melissa?
That's the end of everything I've got.
Okay. Commissioners report, Commissioner Otell?
The only thing that I attended this week was a water meeting out at the, was told to go to the Dan Hunter Room, but I went down there and it was locked up in the basement of the Pinia Project, but at the Calvin Denton Room. Don Schwint and Bob Bragg, this was their second meeting, and I did not attend the first, but I got a synopsis of it. Very educational on water issues, water law, water in the West, and more primarily what's going to try and be worked out with the McElmo water situation, with the drought plan and the changes in irrigation in our community that's drying up a lot of available water to the McElmo people. MBI was there as well as, no, we didn't have anybody from Bureau, or from DWCD, we were just two, two from MBI. And it's a, it's a, I think a very productive and good meeting, and I think it's got a discussion going on, and MBI is involved in it as to how, how the water for McElmo Canyon can be secured and different carrying, they've got different avenues, they may be able to take water out of the Uke Canal and send it down Mud Creek, I mean, there's a lot of options on the table, but a really good conversation about what the future of McElmo Canyon, how we're gonna maintain it and how it's gonna be maintained. And a lot of the people that were there were McElmo people, because they're very concerned about their, their water going away, and so.
Was it pretty well attended?
Uh, there, James, how many were there?
There were probably twenty people there.
Twenty people there, yeah.
Pretty good.
Yeah, and, and Don Schwint is probably the most authoritative man on water, especially in our area, water, water law and everything that I've met, and he and Bob did a very nice job of presenting that.
He's the encyclopedia for-
Yeah, for what? And for the history of our county, you know, the history of MBI, the history of DWCD, of all of that, it's very, very informative, so. We've got one, another meeting planned in November, so.
Commissioner, I have it.
I went to the same meeting, and as Don explained it to me, he feels like that he needs to, that the people need to be familiar with water terminology, with the history, with the whole situation, before they actually try and make a decision on what to do with the McElmo, for the McElmo people. He feels like they need to make this education first.
Very informed, be informed before you make a decision.
But who's the one that makes the decision?
I think it'll boil down to MBI and DWCD and-
And McElmo people.
And McElmo people, yeah. I think, I think, I think it'll be, I think it'll be worked out, but it's gonna, it's gonna be a process. And MBI, MBI seemed very, very willing to work, work on it with them and work on, on coming up to a solution with it, so.
There, there didn't appear to be any crossroads for-
No, no big roadblocks yet, anyway, huh?
Is there a problem now?
Well, I, I think with the drought plan and, and there's-
But I mean, is there, is there any farmers down in McElmo that aren't getting their water?
That, you know, that I can't answer you.
The problem is that nobody has measuring devices down there.
Yeah, they don't have any measuring equipment down there, it's all adjudicated water and they don't have the measuring devices to know what the-
Who gets what.
Who gets what and what the flows are and it's kind of a-
And nobody's been shot yet?
Been a few shovel battles down there, been a few beatings down there, but I don't think anybody's been shot yet.
If you go to the sheriff's office, they'll tell you, there's been several calls down there, but that's, that's the main problem, and this is something McElmo people are gonna have to correct.
Right, they're gonna have to, they've got some work to do on their own part, that's right.
That's all I have.
One thing I have, Jim, we was, we was told that you were gonna publish the fair results?
Yes, and they are, I think, are now online, moving soon, and a few papers coming up.
I just wanted to say thank you.
Yeah, and, and we're very sorry for any misunderstanding, there was obviously some miscommunication, on at least our side, from the, the Fair Board and the extension side as to how that was gonna happen and how, so.
Yeah, you know, we knew it was important, so we always tried to-
Yeah, well, we're, we're grateful you're taking it on as late as it is, so.
All right, public comment?
I'll just hold them.
Yeah, we'll just hold the mic for it. Nodding, nodding, nodded. I guess we're adjourned, second.
Oh, she's second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
So Melissa, are you thinking that more than likely that we're not gonna have a meeting on the thirtieth?
It's the fifth Monday, and we don't really have anything, I was, I thought, well, we could do the budget, but I think it'd be better to have all three of you here, which I, I'll send it to you ahead of time, and then you'll be able to condense it down.
Going to Disneyland?
Almost. Going to, going to Las Vegas.